How are we doing now, Lori?
I have one resident that is trying to join, but I think we can go ahead and get started. She was having a bit of trouble, but.
Good evening. It's Tuesday, August 16th, 2022, and the time is approximately 7:00 PM. My name is Gary Aaronridge, the designated this hearing for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation. Here with me this evening to conduct the public hearing is Maricela Cordova, Acting Chief in the Division of Transportation Engineering, Dan Sheridan, Chief of Planning and Design Section, also of the Division of Transportation Engineering, Rebecca Park, Capital Projects Manager in Design Section, as well as Phil McLaughlin, Chief of Planning and Implementation Section, Deanna Archie, Senior Planner, Planning and Implementation Section, and Wayne Miller, Program Manager, Facilities Passenger Facilities Units from the Division of Transit Services. Ms. Cordova will be providing the information and details regarding the project. Thank you for joining us in this virtual platform. Although we have had quite a few virtual hearings, we are still in the learning process, so please bear with us if we encounter any technical difficulties tonight. Tonight's hearing is being recorded and a link. Excuse me. I just lost and a link, the recording will be posted on the Boyd's Transit Center webpage after 5:00 PM tomorrow. Please note, your video camera is turned off by default this evening. To reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and to maximize technical efficiency, we request that you please do not turn your video camera on. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of this hearing begins, those who have signed up to testify will be called on and unmuted when it's their turn to speak. If you have not signed up in advance to testify, but wish to do so, please raise your hand by clicking on the reaction, the reactions at the bottom of your screen and then clicking Raised Hand. If you are joining by telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad. Please wait until the testimony portion of this hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion. We will call on you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone when it's your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimonies. Following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a question and answer session. You may also raise your hand to ask a question, or you are welcome to type your question in the chat. The icon for which is at the bottom of your screen as well. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Section 49-53 of the Montgomery County Code. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain testimony, which may influence the final design of the project. Public comments should be focused entirely on the project, which is the topic of discussion at the Boyd's Transit Center. All interested persons are entitled to be heard at this hearing. However, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a forum for dialogue, questions and answers, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the Boyd Transit Center project that is the subject of this hearing. If comments stray into areas unrelated to this project, I will ask that you refocus your comments on the subject project. Following the conclusion of this public hearing, a record will remain open for four weeks to allow any person who is unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their comments included into the public record and be fully considered. The official closing date for which all comments and testimony must be received is Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Submissions may be emailed or sent via regular mail and must be received or postmarked by the close of the hearing record. Please be sure to provide your name and property address on your submission. Written testimonies will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. Submissions should be sent to Ms. Park, P-A-R-K. His contact information is posted at the top of this evening's chat as well as on your screen. After the hearing is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as Hearing Officer, will review and weigh all the information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the Director of the Department of Transportation, Mr. Christopher Conklin. It's his decision regarding the final decision of the project. And now to discuss the Boyd's Transit Center, I give you Ms. Maricela Cordova.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The subject of this evening's public hearing is to consider the design for the construction of a new bus loop, parking lot, and a standalone restroom structure for bus operators on the former Anderson property at Boyd's Mark Station. For your convenience, we have posted displays that aid in the visual description of this project. The displays will also be posted on the project website by 5:00 PM tomorrow, August 17th, 2022. Display A is an aerial project vicinity maps, map of Boyd's Transit Center. The Boyd's Mark Station is located within the Boyd's Historic District. The existing parking lot is located south of the station and provides 15 spaces. The parking lot and station are owned by CSX Railroad and leased and maintained by MTA. The Transit Center is proposed on parcels along MD 117, which is Barnesville Road, just north of the Boyd's Mark Station and west to MD 121, Clarksburg Road. The parcels were previously owned by the Anderson family. The project site is approximately one acre in size. Display B shows the structures that will be demolished prior to the construction of the Transit Center. The demolition duration will be one and a half months. Display C shows the transit improvements in detail. The project provides 42 additional parking spaces, including two accessible parking spaces. The project also provides a dedicated bus loop and bus bay for future ride-on services. The proposed Transit Center will also provide both short and long-term bicycle parking west of Hoyle's Mill, a historic structure that will remain. A 10-feet-wide shared use path will be constructed along Barnesville Road at the Transit Center. A new storm drain system will be installed within the project area. A new bus operator restroom and electrical closet will replace a former two-story auto parts store. Display C1 shows the floor plan of the new facility. The facility will provide seating for waiting transit passengers, covered storage for a minimum of 20 bicycles, a comfort station for bus operations, and ADA, I'm sorry, bus operators, and ADA site access to the Mark Train Platform, and adjacent electrical equipment closet will support the facility. The angled wall will display route signage. Display C2 shows the elevation view of the facility. The walls enclosing the toilet room and electrical closet will be constructed of ground-facing concrete block in a running bond pattern stacked every two vertical rows. The block pattern will complement the full-dressed stone metal shingles of the historic Hoyle's Mill building. The guard rail is required due to the sloping sidewalk on the east and south side of the bicycle storage. Display C3 shows the approach view of the building. The roof design was developed to slope towards the south of the site and was inspired by double-slope Maryland barns found nearby. The exposed wood structure continues the rural design references. The site area left open to the west is anticipated to have a future community amenity. Project justification. MCDOT initiated a feasibility study in the fall of 2012 to evaluate the expansion of Boyd's Mark Station after receiving numerous resident requests. The project is also recommended in the Mark Rail Community Sector Plan, which was approved and adopted in April 2019. With the addition of parking and ride-on bus service to the Boyd's Mark Station, the project will support the increasing demand of commuter ridership in the area due to the continuing growth in Clarksburg and Germantown. The project will also provide a safe pedestrian and bicycle access to and from the transit station. Cost and assessments. The total cost of this project is currently estimated at $5,650,000, including engineering, land acquisition, site improvement, utilities, and construction. There are no properties which are considered to be specially benefited by the purpose improvement. Therefore, no properties are expected to be assessed. About exhibits. As previously discussed, several exhibits are incorporated into the public record binder for your information and consideration. The exhibits include: Number one, Office of Management and Bots at Boyd's Transit Center, P501915. Number two, Boyd's Transit Center 70% Transportation Design Plans. Number three, Boyd's Transit Center 30% Building Design Plans. Number four, written testimony regarding the Boyd's Transit Center proposal provided prior to this hearing. Number five, Washington Times newspaper and online advertisement proof, Montgomery County News release dated August 2nd, 2022, and Go Montgomery! Newsletter published on August 4th and 11th, 2022, all advertising this hearing. Number six, list of attendees to be added following this hearing. Number seven, hearing transcripts also to be added following the hearing. Project-related data and files can be downloaded from the project website. Alternatively, you may contact Ms. Park to request digital copies of the project files at RebeccaPark, The files will continue to be available to the public until the record for this public hearing is officially closed. As previously stated, here with us this evening is Dan Sheridan, Chief of Planning and Design Section, Rebecca Park, Project Manager for Boyd's Transit Center, Phil McLaughlin, Deanna Archie, and Wayne Miller with the Division of Transit Services. In addition, we have Pam DeSino, Alex Ubrin, and Fred Hyser from the engineering consulting firm WRNA present at this hearing. We will be available after the hearing to answer any questions regarding the design aspects for this project. And now I will turn things back over to Mr. Aaronridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordova. We will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. We will begin with those who signed up to testify when registering to attend this hearing. Those who have not signed up to testify will have the opportunity to do so by clicking on reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and then clicking Raised Hand. Once given speakers' rights, please clearly provide your name and address for the record prior to beginning your testimony. Because there may be significant interest in this project and the number of attendees in this hearing who wish to speak, it may be necessary to enforce a three-minute time limit for every testimony. So I'm requesting that all presentations taking longer than three minutes be summarized so as to comply with the time constraints. In addition to testifying orally, you are welcome to provide your full testimony in writing for submission into the record. Written testimony carries the same weight as oral testimony. Lori Main will read names out loud from the sign-in sheet. And reminder to limit your testimony to three minutes if needed and for speakers to announce their name and address clearly before testimony. Thank you.
All right, Gary. We don't have anyone signed up to testify this evening. Would anybody like to testify?
And we can give you more than three minutes if that.
Yeah.
In fact, you need more than three minutes to state your testimony. I see Miriam Schundbaum.
Yes, Miriam, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, this is Miriam Schundbaum. I live at 15004 Clopper Road in Boyd's. And I am speaking as President of the Boyd's Historical Society. First of all, I want to thank MCDOT for getting to the 70% design stage on this project. Ever since 2006, when we successfully stopped the state from closing the Mark Station with help from Mr. Aaronridge, we have advocated for a plan to ensure the continued viability of the historic station at the heart of our community. This plan will do that at the community's choice of location while also extending both ride-on and paratransit access to Boyd's. I was also very happy to receive an email from Ms. Park this afternoon correcting my misapprehension and assuring me that the plan provides for parking spaces and an ADA ramp to the adjacent Boyd's Country Store. That leaves the issue of historic Hoyle's Mill, which is owned by the county. On behalf of the Boyd's Historical Society, let me say that the plan must provide for reuse of this building. The county has a legal responsibility to preserve and maintain it unless another caretaker and user can be found. But another caretaker will not be found if the county redoes the septic system and builds a restroom for the bus drivers and excludes the Hoyle's Mill building from its use. As long as you're redoing the septic system and building a restroom, it must enable reuse of Hoyle's Mill. This could easily and cost-effectively be done by connecting the restroom to the Hoyle's Mill building as we have suggested. And I will close by noting that the only well currently on the property is in the basement under Hoyle's Mill. So the building is in scope for the project, so please include the building in the scope of the project.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that has requested to provide testimony?
Yes, Gary, Ms. Leslie Seville.
Okay, Leslie Seville, can you please? Please state your name and address for the record. Is is she unmuted?
How about now?
I have, yes, we can hear you.
Terrific. I am Leslie Seville. I'm a resident at 9900 Georgia Avenue, Apartment 106, Silver Spring. I'm a Boyd's Historical Society member, a Silver Spring resident, and I have had the opportunity to work on this project with Ms. Park and WRNA for many years as planning staff at Montgomery Planning. I'm speaking as myself, not as a planner, because I am a former planner. My comment on the 70% submission for the Boyd's Transit Center follows. The scope of this project is important but insufficient. It must be expanded. This site is located within the National Register boundary for the Boyd's White Grounds Historic District and a Maryland Heritage Area. The property with the historic Boyd's Mill is an irreplaceable gateway to our Western Heritage Areas, including the Agricultural Reserve. In 2018, staff consulted with the Maryland Historical Trust and were made aware of adverse impacts the project would have and were advised to consider how to avoid, minimize, or mitigate those impacts. The 70% submission doesn't seem to address this. Please coordinate further with Sarah Rogers, Executive Director of Heritage Montgomery, to assure that this project is accredited to your agency, SHA, and Montgomery County, and it becomes the economic asset it has the opportunity to be. Incorporate and reuse the Hoyle's Mill. The mill is a public resource that should be utilized. Provide access to a bathroom to assure public, human reas- I'm sorry, I can't talk tonight. To assure human reuse of the historic Hoyle's Mill. Add adequate ADA-compliant ingress and egress for the Mill Building. At 70%, this proposal now shows the Poolsville Small Engine Repair Building being demolished and a new building with a bathroom. It does not show a well or septic facility. DPS does not show any septic testing. Until there has been a successful water table and percolation test, this project is premature. The existing well is under Hoyle's Mill. The mill must be brought into the project's scope. This project does not reflect the historic context of the location. At a minimum, the new structure, site lighting, railings, bike racks, signage, and other details should reflect the historic section of Boyd's. Integrate the reuse of the Hoyle's Mill into these plans. Design the bathroom facility and site details to be compatible with the historic context. Pedestrian scale lighting should be used. The proposed 25-foot lights are out of scale. Avoid overlighting the site. Turn off lighting overnight. Review these designs with Heritage Montgomery, the Boyd's Historical Society Preservation Staff, the Historic Preservation Commission, SHA, and Maryland Historical Trust staff. The details used at Kensington and Germantown Mark Stations may be appropriate for use here. Review the plantings due to countywide overplanting. Avoid planting red maples. Consider the users. The proposal forces all Mark users, including handicapped users, to cross the railroad tracks at grade. This is shameful. The existing pedestrian tunnel must be de-watered and retrofitted for handicapped users. Room is being provided for 400 square feet of bicycle storage. Provide restroom facilities for that number of bicyclists. Grading between the proposed entry and the new walkway and the Boyd's Country Store does not provide positive drainage at the store's foundation. Drainage must be handled on this property and not discharged onto any adjacent property. A different use than the potential future community garden should be determined with the community. Several community uses have been proposed by residents, and in collaboration with them, one should be selected. I'm disappointed not to see the Hoyle's Mill being incorporated into this project. Multiple parties have asked for its inclusion for multiple years. Given the opportunities that this site presents to the community and the entire county, the scope of this project must be expanded to include it as a top priority. Thank you for providing me with this opportunity to provide input.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Lori, who else do we have?
Next, we'll hear from Chris Arnt.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, this is Chris Arnt. I live at 21090 Sugar Ridge Terrace in Boyd's, 20841. And this is one of those rare occasions where I am complete, I am in complete agreement with Miriam Schundbaum. This is a great project. I think it should be done as soon as possible, but we have to include the proper plumbing, I'm going to call it, for the Hoyle's Mill. So septic and otherwise. It doesn't make sense to go ahead without that, since that building will be used in the future, so let's do it now. So with that, again, I like the plans, and I'd like to see those as soon as possible. I am a Mark rider, and this would be great to have in Boyd's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll hear from Gordon Taylor.
Okay, Gordon Taylor, 22101 Slidell Road in Boyd's. My thought is that it's so important to encourage bike riding, that the bike ride lockup area is at least covered. Not so important to be enclosed, particularly not enclosed, meaning those lockers that you see, for example, in Rockville, at the Rockville Station, but just that it's covered, you know, some sort of overhang that would allow the bikes themselves not to have the wet seats and all those kind of things so that people will really use it. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all we have right now. Would anyone else like to testify tonight? Oh, okay, we have Dan Seaman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Dan Seaman. I'm the current president of the Boyd Civic Association. In addition to the written testimony I've provided, I'd like to say that both of these buildings in this area, the Hoyle's Mill and the Boyd's Market, are long-term iconic features here. The other buildings there were mostly built completely for utility and not so much for beauty. It is an improvement to the hillside there in Boyd's that they be removed. And I welcome this and the addition of the removal of the newer hardware store. I think it opens up Boyd's to views from both sides, enhances the historic features on the largely residential side of the tracks right immediately there at the station. I've been in Boyd's since 1960. I used to ride my bikes to the Boyd's Market and the hardware store, and it was all very interesting and quite a learning experience for me in my summertime days. But the Hoyle's Mill itself is very central to the history of Boyd's. It's in my written testimony about the previous mill on Little Seneca Creek, south of Boyd's. It was moved to Boyd's in the progression of technology for convenience and reliability in use of the train tracks for transportation. Keeping these old features in Boyd's, I think, are important. And along with some other testimony, I do agree with a a station waiting area or necessary bathroom for the bus operator to include the use of the Hoyle's Mill and perhaps have a change in design to reflect the more historic features of the old Boyd's. Not necessarily exactly relating to the Hoyle's Mill, but possibly somehow. The old station features were were very nice features, and they are a throwback to an earlier time. They may be considered. So we've had other testimony that I fully agree with, and so that'll be at the end of mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that is online that would like to provide testimony tonight? I see people in the chat are commenting. Katie Blackman, would you like to go on record verbally with your comment?
Yes, I'll read it out loud.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Blackman. I'm at 19735 White Ground Road. I'm in full agreement with Leslie's thoughtful testimony. We have an opportunity here to increase access to public transportation, create a community gathering space, and honor areas. I do think the plan is part of the way there, but I think there's work that we could do. And if we as residents have to abide by rules for maintaining our historic appearance of our homes and any additions to our properties, shouldn't the county be held to the same standard? The current bathroom and bike facility doesn't fit into the historic, visually the historic nature of the community and surely wouldn't be allowed to be built by residents, so I'd like to ask the county to follow those same standards.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'll ask again. We certainly have time if others would like to comment this evening. Again, remember, you still have an opportunity for the next four weeks to submit comments for the record. With that, I may thank everybody for your testimony and seeing that everybody who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to do so tonight. This concludes the oral testimony portion of the public hearing. We will now have a question and answer session. Please click the reactions and raise hand icons to raise your hand if you wish to ask a question. You are also welcome to type your question in the chat box. Others have done that tonight as well. So does anybody else have any questions that they would like to pose for the staff that's here tonight to consider?
Okay, we have Katie Blackman.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, if any, you mentioned um, uh, the addition of a new storm drain. And I was just wondering what if any uh, green infrastructure was being added to the project.
Okay. Is there someone on the team that could address that?
This is Rebecca Park. Um, we, the the green is infrastructure, uh, the green drainage infrastructure referring to uh, could be uh, terras, um, but uh, we we use the um, just regular storm drain uh, R C P pipes and yard inlet structures for this project.
Okay, next we have a question from Miriam Schoendau. Miriam?
Yeah, my question is about the green square in the plans, which I guess is where the uh, concrete block building used to be. Um, and I am wondering what amenity is intended to go there because the way it's designed right now, nobody is going to do a nice ninety-degree angle where the sidewalk goes to get to the train station. Everybody is going to cut a desire path on the diagonal right through that green square to get to the station or to get to the parking lot. And you know, if you if you want to know more about desire paths, you can talk to Eli Glazier, who's working on the pedestrian master plan at the planning department. There's gonna be a desire path there within a week.
Lori, could you please turn to that uh, slide that shows the uh, display? See?
See?
Yeah, time view. Uh, can you zoom in a little bit on that green space uh, that's next to the uh, the restroom structure?
Uh, here?
No, 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 to the left, to the left. Yep, got it. Got it, okay. So can you zoom in a little bit? Okay. Okay, so uh, Miriam, to answer your question, that space was to leave for any future use. I know the community um, expressed the interest in uh, building a plaza for a community using the future. So that's why the space was left there. Um, I do understand um, your concern. Uh, you made a great point that people could cut through that green space. So um, that's a great point, and we haven't thought about that. Um, so we could uh, put up a maybe um, a fence around it uh, to prevent the people cutting through that grass area. Uh, but um, we'll have more information um, um, as the design progresses.
Am I, am I unmuted still?
No, no, you're, you're.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I mean, in in this case, the issue is not, you know, that you don't solve the problem by putting up a fence to make people go around. You know, you would solve the problem by making it convenient for people to get to and from the train platform, which is actually kind of the point of the whole facility. Um, putting up a fence would just be um, you know, pedestrian exclusion at bad design.
I mean, right now, uh, can you see my arrow where I'm pointing it? Um, oh, Lori, so there's a sidewalk around this uh, this facility uh, and to the, to the platform. Um, Lori, I I think I'm the co-host. Can I control the uh, um, the cursor?
Uh, no, no, you have to be sharing your screen.
Okay. So, uh, Miriam, if you see the uh, this path um, to the right of the facility, that's the sidewalk uh, that leads to the walkway to the platform.
Yeah, I I understand that. It's just, you know, pedestrians go in the shortest line, and the shortest line is the hypotenuse.
Sure, we can look at this in the future, design of this, and see if there's a way to incorporate pedestrian facility, facilitate pedestrian access across that area.
That would be terrific.
Uh, that was Dan Sheridan, right?
Yes, Dan Sheridan, M C D O T. I work with Rebecca.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a question from Gordon Taylor.
Yes, um, at one time, we were looking at the Boyd's Park, or the proposed or potential Boyd's Park. Um, that's right on the Clopper Road, just behind the station on the other side of the street, right? Um, is is that still being considered for overflow parking? Is that, are you thinking about that as within the context of your design? Because it it, the thought process being that um, that if we're really successful uh, for, and with all the buildup in in Clark'sburg, et cetera, that we may, we may quickly outgrow the forty-two and and need the additional parking. So are you considering a, at the park, parking as potential for this development as well?
No, I mean, that's, um, I'm not aware of that. Um, you're you're refer, uh, Mr. Taylor, you're referring to that the, the Boyd's Local Park, um.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah, I I I know exactly where you're talking about, the the location you're talking about. We weren't consider, we are not considering the the site as the overflow parking because um, we, D O T, um, you know, coordinated this project with the Boyd Civic Association from the planning stage, and the Boyd Civic Association expressed the uh, the in, the strong opinion about preserving the local park, uh, not for the parking purpose.
Well, we, we would, you know, again, we're we're thinking about the future and this being a highly successful thing and needing overflow parking. Uh, we don't, we, M C D D O T do not have, you know, control over the park. Uh, but if, if in the case that this is very successful and additional parking is needed, uh, those options can be considered.
Great, great. And a follow-up question, really, because it's somewhat related, the um, we, 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 this plan, which is, you know, beautiful plan, by the way, it looks fantastic, uh, absent the comments involving the the Hoyle's Mill. But one comment I have is that this is a train station, quote-unquote, "on the wrong side of the tracks." That's always been my thought, in the sense that um, the inbound is on the other side. And so what's the thought process, and this gets at things like, you know, where the location of the parking is and all that sort of thing. What's the thought process from a sa- safety viewpoint of people sort of, you know, running at the last minute to catch the train on the other side of the tracks?
Um, somebody from W R A can like to address this question, either Pam or Alex.
Question is about people running and catching the train on the opposite side of the tracks?
Yeah, so one, I I think for sure would need a, a, that, that, those crossing boards would certainly need to be improved, and hopefully that's gonna be done. Um, but then, just whatever needs to be done, I think Miriam's comment about the cut-through and not going necessarily across the designated areas is spot-on, but those kind of things are gonna be important. Because, you know, we we get down to twenty-five degrees, so people are gonna kind of wanna hang out in the building, and at the last moment, or in their cars, much less, uh, they're gonna start wanting to run across. Uh, you see that at Germantown, for sure, so.
Yeah, anything along the tracks itself is outside the county's jurisdiction, so it'd be M T As. Um, and as Dan said earlier, we can look at, you know, how the sidewalks access the mark station per Miriam's comment.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a question from Chris Arnt. Chris, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought I had it unmuted myself. So, following uh, Gordon's comments and and even Leslie's, we have that pedestrian underpass, which needs to be addressed. That's the, that's the solution for people getting safely from one side to the other. And it's, it's, it really needs to be incorporated into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Dan Seaman.
Uh, yes, uh, as, what uh, technical difficulties are there in um, having the restroom uh, not in the location shown here, but closer or attached to the Hoyle's Mill itself? Uh, the Hoyle's Mill is gonna be a building that's uh, standing there as a representation of the past historically. And uh, that's important, and I'm glad it's being done. However, making use of the building is another matter. Um, it's in the written, written testimony submitted by me and others. Um, but what technical difficulties are there in having a Hoyle's Mill uh, ha- make use of this restroom? Uh, possibly move the restroom location closer to it or attach it to it? Uh, uh, so that gatherings could be held in that building uh, for multiple purposes. Um, and if you are rebuilding the septic system as it is, that may be answering the question. I don't think weekend use of the Hoyle's Mill building uh, throughout a year will uh, create the water flow that will overwhelm, you know, just an average, ordinary septic system. So I, I don't think that's really a big issue, but now's the time to consider it because of the the design stage and the fact that the septic system is being rebuilt.
Okay, so I can answer the question. Um, so we did look into the uh, the possibility of moving that bus operator's restroom next to the uh, right ne- right, right next to the mill. The problem with that is, the mill has severe level of structural and architectural issues. So that even tying this bathroom to the mill will ca- will result in a significant cost of renovation of the mill. And also, um, I know the community wasn't interested in the public bathroom, but based on the septic design, um, in order to have this public bathroom that you, our community has envisioned, we need to have a three acre, about three acres of lot. And the project site right now is only one acre. So, uh, because of these two reasons, uh, we um, couldn't design a public bathroom. Um, so I hope that answers the questions.
Uh, that standard is not based on uh, water flow usage? For the uh, septic system, but just strictly public?
It is, it is. The the septic design would be based on the usage, right? So, a public building would have, you know, say you wanna use it for a town gathering or something like that. That has a much higher septic flow would be required for that. And the site just can't support that, so. Uh, and and then, as Rebecca also stated, the, the historic mill itself has structural issues, so tying a bathroom to it. At this point, it's just, we don't have the scope for that, but we don't have the, the money to cover that scope. So we can continue to ask for it. Um, you know, a renovation of the mill itself. Um, we can ask for those funds. We don't currently have them in our budget. Um, that, that's the difficulty. Um, so uh, planning for a community building, uh, it does have a higher septic flow, and thus would need a bigger septic system. And the site can only support a certain amount.
Yeah, we ran the calculations, and the, you know, based on the septic computation, the average flow of holy bathroom will be, will require uh, six hundred ninety gallons per day, which which means it will require project site to be three acres.
Well, I'm I'm wondering, could not, not be restricted in use? The restroom, I mean, could be restricted in use for uh, daily uh, during the year, number of days per year? The usage would never approach six hundred ninety gallons uh, day per year uh, as a septic system design would uh, follow to. So, I just off the top of my head, common sense would tell me it would never be used for that. And why couldn't it be restricted in use and still be uh, utilized on the occasional uh, events that could be held there?
We, we understand your comment. Again, uh, that's a, a scope of work that is not included in this transportation project. We can ask for it and see if it can be added, you know, based on your comments. You know, we've heard multiple people say, hey, we wanna use the, the, the mill. Um, it's just not part of this transportation project as scoped.
Okay.
Okay, next we have a question from Dale Cassidy.
Hi, um, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I wanna go back to uh, the points that Dan Seaman's and Chris Arnt made. I guess we were talking about the tunnel. Running late for the train, you know, given that the inbound is on the opposite side. Um, obviously, when the train's pulling in, you can't even run across. That means the tunnel, which definitely needs attention, because that should be used. Who is responsible for the tunnel? Is it C S X? Is it the county? Is it the state? Who's in charge of that? Issue?
Um, I believe that's a, a C S X. I've seen the C S X property. Um, Lori, can you please turn to that display? Yeah, full, yeah.
Okay.
Zoom in.
Zoom in.
Yeah, the way that it's like it's. Uh, yeah.
It's over toward the left where it says operator restroom on that side.
There's that black square.
Yeah.
Oh, like, right, okay.
Yeah, it's right in there.
Okay.
So, um, D O T, we, D O T can do the simple maintenance work, which is um, cleaning the drainage and uh, you know, uh, repairing the fixtures and uh, putting a flash coat of fresh coat of painting, but right now, nobody's maintaining it. Um, it should be maintained by uh, either C S X or M T A. But um, we, we, D O T can do a very minimum uh, maintenance work that would allow the um, pedestrians uh, for their usage.
Hmm.
Yeah, and I'll just add that uh, there's potential to maybe do some minor improvements to make maintenance uh, less of an issue, like, uh, I think there's trees that are right above it, and maybe there can be some sort of awning or something like that to uh, reduce the amount of rain and leaves that fall into the open now, so that can be looked at as part of this.
Yeah, the flooding is definitely, obviously, makes it unusable for a- as much as that does happen, and it just seems like such a, a perfect solution to some of these, you know, uh, things that have come up, so it's just a shame now to have to find who at C S X has to deal with that.
Yeah, as M C D O T gets a bigger presence up here with the construction of this project, we can look at maintaining that in a, you know, you know, more frequent manner.
Hmm.
Degree and, you know, the flooding issue, uh, you know, maybe, again, with a canopy or something like that, can be reduced or whatever, but just kind of touching some of the points that were earlier made, I don't think it helps, I mean, I guess, I forget who it was, but somebody said, like, you know, the station is sort of on the wrong side of the tracks, which we can't really help with that. This is the property we have. You know, so if people wanna wait in their car and run across at the last minute, I, I don't know whether the tunnel helps with that or not, uh, in the colder weather. Uh, you know, it does give you an option when you don't have to run across the tracks, but I don't know if it makes it a faster option. Um, so those are just my thoughts on that, but I, I, you know, I I do understand how, like, in your morning, you wanna stay warm or whatever, but you know, there's, there's only so much we can do about that. Again, there are some parking spaces on the other side, but you know, the other, the majority are gonna be on, on the outside.
Hmm.
So, that, that is what it is, and you know, commuters will have to adjust, you know, their, their timing to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we'll hear from Katie Blackman.
Um, forgive me if you hear the train in question in the background, but um,
but I had a question. If you are able to restore that tunnel, the current plans don't look like there's any pathways to the tunnel. So would that then be added in, or how would that become usable so that we wouldn't be kind of traversing the grass, which can get pretty muddy there to use it?
There is a pathway, I mean, as shown on the display, there is a sidewalk lead to the entrance to the tunnel.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, next, Miriam Shonbaum.
Yeah, I wanted to say, well, this is not actually what I was going to say, that maybe 10 or 12 years ago, that I think the Department of General Services put some money into the tunnel, and how they figured it out with CSX or whose responsibility it was, I don't know. But the county did it, and so presumably, the county can do it again. That wasn't actually my comment. My comment, I put it in the chat, was whether the transportation project as scoped relies on the well that is below the Hoyle's Mill building or whether there's a plan to drill a new well. I couldn't tell from the plans, but there's a lot that I couldn't see in the plan, so I'm asking.
Your question is, if there's a, could you repeat the question, Miriam?
Whether there is a plan to drill a new well or whether the restroom is supposed to use the well that is under the Hoyle's Mill building or whether the restroom will not have running water, I guess is another option.
We are now planning to drill a new well. We are replacing the septic tank in the system because it's way outdated. It's past the lifespan time. Pam, can you address the question?
The exist, the future bathroom uses the existing water that the hardware store uses.
Okay, and the well is under the Hoyle's Mill building? Did you know that?
Yes, again, the future restroom uses the existing hardware store's water.
From the well under the Hoyle's Mill building?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have a question from Dee Flood.
Yes, hi, this is Dave Flood. Nice to hear and see and, or not see, but hear everyone. I've been riding the Mark train for 18 years, and I got to tell you, it's great to see this happen. But it is, you mentioned this, it's so funny how it's on the other side of the tracks that we ride everything on. Is the plan have anything to do with where people ride the train over the tracks or anything for that? Or is it, are you going to add anything to the, you know, again, an awning or anything over the tracks or not? Is that not included? Right? No, I guess not. It's only, it's only the parking lot, right?
Yeah, you were asking the, like, earning, like, waiting on the platform or on, I mean, we do have a waiting area.
I know, just for the, just for the people riding the bus, right? I mean, it's like, it's that for that. It's not.
Yeah, yeah, because it's in, it's the platform and up to the, where the edge of the sidewalk is.
That's it.
A CSX easement. We can't build anything.
Yeah. Have you guys even talked to CSX or?
Yes, yes, CSX, in fact, that they are reviewing this design, the 70% design. And I know community would like to see the sidewalk between the two buildings, the between the Hoyle's Mill and a former auto parts store building. But they simply stated, no, you know, they would not allow any walkway or path within the CSX right away.
And they wouldn't work with you on designs of that kind of thing either?
So I, you know, the purpose of this was the, working with the CSX is the coordination and, you know, trying to incorporate the other comments from the Boyd Civic Association. I'm trying to have them explain why. And also, if that's not, if the side path behind the two buildings is not allowed, at least allow us to extend the sidewalk all the way out to the platform.
This comes back to my second question, which goes down to Germantown, too. It's this historical look that it really is going to just make this look like an eyesore. In other words, if we can't make it look all like within the community, it's really going to be tough to say, yeah, this is a great idea all in all. But the thing is, is if you can't make it feel like if this not even in the budget, too, to get the right kind of light fixtures, and we ran into this with the light that went down in the corner here. If we can't get all the historical look in this design, and it's not even included in the budget, in other words, have you looked into all the material that's needed? Like, the brick and the stuff that goes on to the ground and everything that to make it look almost like, you know, Germantown, to make it look historical? Is that also not part of this?
Getting this historic, historical look is our goal. You know, the facility that we showed you in one of the displays is designed based on that, the historical look in the surrounding area. Yeah, that, yeah, that, right there, the image.
It looks kind of, you know, industrial, like, I'm sorry, I'm a designer. I have to tell you, from an artist's standpoint, like, Katie said the same thing, and Leslie said the same thing. It just isn't, you know, it doesn't seem a cultural feel of the community. And I've been here for almost 25 years now, and everything that everyone says about their homes, if you go, went around and looked at everyone's home, I live in an 1800-year home, and it's, it's, it's made of cheek and wood, and, you know, this isn't the same kind of material. I mean, I know you're trying to make that look like with the, with the wood and everything, but I don't know. That's, that's my thing. It's just a question, really.
Yeah.
If the budget was going to afford that.
Thank you for all your feedback, and we'll go back to the.
It's really a question about the budget.
There's also coordination with the historical review, so we can work on, we can, we can share it with them and get input on, on that, on just what you're saying, you know, like.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, what can we do? And of course, budget's part of it, but also, you know, a streetlight is a streetlight, and if we get the right streetlight, it shouldn't be any more or less expensive. So, you know, we can work on those details with.
Yeah, but so is an oil-burning light. So it's really, never mind.
Okay, next, Maggie Bartlett. Maggie?
Maybe we can move on, and if she comes up, comes back, we can get her later.
Okay, great. Next, we'll hear from Dale Cassidy.
Okay, can you just show the bird's eye view again, that slide?
Sure.
Thank you. That one. Curious why those handicap spots are way over there on the other side of the mill rather than there are these three spaces kind of right next to the Boyd store showing between that grassy patch and the Boyd store. There's three spaces there. What are those for?
So we've been working with the Boyd Civic Associations, and they express interest of preserving the Boyd's Country Store and easier access to the stores, so.
No, it doesn't. I don't understand. What do you, I'm not sure. That doesn't impede any access to the Boyd store?
So we are, I mean, it's not, we are still working on whether we should put those handicap spots in those three places, or we could use those two of the three spots for the designated parking spots for the Boyd's Country Store because we're still working on where the accessible parking spaces will be.
Okay, yeah, because it just seems awfully far showing where they are now. And Boyd store still has their spaces in front, you know, it rarely gets overloaded. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, Maggie Bartlett, would you like to?
We, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Fabulous.
I had to open up my computer instead of looking at it. Question, the path that's on the wrong side of the tracks from the tunnel to the railroad tracks? Well, right now, you'd have to walk on the road. Is there any plan to improve that, to add safety?
I'm sorry.
There's, all right, there's, on the, on the tunnel?
Yes.
On the side, on the wrong side of the tracks, where people would have to cross under? Will, will there be a sidewalk or some kind of area that people wouldn't have to walk in the street to get to the train station?
Yeah, I mean, there's a pathway. There's a walkway around it. Lori, can you kind of go through this gray line? Yeah, there is a path to the, to the tunnel. No, that, yeah, back to that display, yeah, there is a, there is a path to the tunnel so that people will not be walking on the bus bay or the parking lot.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking on the other side of the tracks.
Rebecca, I believe she's talking about the south entrance to the tunnel. We can look, we can look at making an improved connection to the station area.
Yeah, because right now, somebody would have to walk on the street around a curve. That would not be very safe.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, Leslie Seville.
Did I get the unmuted?
You did.
Hot diggity dog. So you guys last went to the Maryland Historical Trust in 2018. They have not seen this plan. I think some of the questions that we have might be helped if there were MHT comments for everybody here testifying tonight to be able to look at and give you reactions to. Is there any way for you to get this plan submitted to them and get comments back before the closure of your, your public hearing so that they can have the benefit of seeing it, and all of us here can have the benefit of MHT's comments?
Yeah, MHT is, we've been coordinating with MHT, and we also received a letter of comments from State Highway Administration regarding their review of the access permit that's needed for this project. They even, SHA even stated that they are aware of the coordination with MHT. So we'll be receiving comments from MHT shortly.
That would be great. Can you post those to the project website for us?
Their MHT's comments?
Yes, that'd be absolutely fantastic.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Dan Seaman.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to critique this shelter restroom area design. It's got some sharp angles or rather provocative and modern-looking. And then it has a post and beam structure in wood that's an intimation toward historic something or another. And it has a coursework that matches the Hoyle's Mill 10 siding. I would say that it's neither modern nor old. The two or three elements, the two elements, the shape and the post and beam structure are sort of conflict with one another in a way. I mean, I think it looks modern overall. It does not look historic. The overhang, you know, it reminds me of the awning in front of the Dean's Garage there that was held up by cables that always looked as going to fall down. And I think people looked at it twice whenever there was a snowfall before they walked under it. You know, if that's an intimation, I, it's not designed to imitate, I would say, but it's reminiscent of it. Those old buildings were haphazard. They were just useful. They weren't aesthetic. So I do have a question, like Mr. Flood had, about this design. To relate it to Hoyle's Mill, I think is an excellent idea. But I would say it either needs to be, you know, all the way modern and just be another element to, to show against the old building, or it should be something that very much relates to the old station or the Hoyle's Mill building itself more fully.
Thank you for your comments, and we'll go back and then evaluate the architecture design of this facility.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Michael Abraham.
Hi, thank you. So I came in late, so I don't know if this has been addressed, but I wanted to ask about the lighting, and my concern is about preventing or minimizing light pollution in the immediate area at night. And are there plans to have the lights on timers so that they're not on all night or have them be motion sensors or something like that?
Oh, we're still a little premature in the lighting design, even though we do have a 70% design. We were, we still have to design that. I mean, that's a very good comment, so we'll incorporate that. But I don't have much to share with you in terms of lighting design other than we are trying to have fixtures that will blend in in the historical surrounding.
Thank you. I'm just pointing out that the lights, you know, don't need to be on from 10:00 at night till, say, 6:00, 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, but thank you.
And I would say that there, and I'm not a lighting expert, there are fixtures that were with the Dark Sky Initiative type things that try to reduce the amount of light pollution. And we can also take a comment on, you know, timing, after hours, they are off or dimmed or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Gordon Taylor.
Okay, great, yeah. Compliments to the design team here, number one, for taking into account the business, the loan business that we have physically in Boyd's, and I think that's critical. I think anyone who's been in this town for the last 20, 30, 40 years has known, has seen already the vast improvement that that business has made to that specific space. And they, the parking that you showed earlier, I think really shows those three spaces would be critical for, for, for giving that business continued viability. If we rely only on the spaces that are directly in front, that means we've literally cut those, that poor ownership team's parking probably, you know, less than half, really, in terms of what would really, today, people are parking, particularly the trucks are parking all in front of the existing hardware store building. So it would be a vast change. Even as the plan sits now, it's a huge change of the parking that they really enjoy today. But I think keeping and maintaining those three spots are going to be critical. Big question I have, will parking continue for that business in the rear of the building? Is that going to be possible?
Where, where of the building? Lori, can you? Uh, where, where of the building? Uh, oh, uh, Lori, can you please, um, flip to that display?
Yeah, that's the country store. It's the, those two buildings off to the left there, the far left, it's the shorter of the two. That's the, that's the country store. So behind it, there's somewhat asphalt, but, uh, is, or gravel. Is that gonna be available for parking for the business?
Uh, I, I believe so. We are only touching the, um, the Anderson, Anderson family, former Anderson family parcels. Um. I mean, that, the, the, the space behind the Boyd's Country Store is, I mean, is up to the owner.
Right, and, and any of the concrete that you see, that tan color, all of that is not parkable, right, for anyone trying to patronize the business there, is that right?
Again.
None of that parking would be.
Well, again, we are only, um, just doing the design within the, um, Anderson properties.
Okay, well, I just want to clarify that where you see that concrete, none of, you, you know, a car can't park on that, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, if, the side, where the sidewalk would be.
Well, all of that, I guess that's all where the bus goes. The, the gray area?
The, yeah, the gray area, yeah, yeah, the gray area, that, that, right, that's a, that's a bus loop. So the, the, I, I know the, um, the store uses parking on this, on that side of the store, but that parking will be all gone.
Yeah, and, and this is the point I really want to make, that again, if you looked at these, this team, this ownership team really probably has two good spots in this design. So it's gonna be critical that, that asphalt area that was just spoken to, um, that that, they would have that too, right? You know, that the ones that are off to the right there. Otherwise, you're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna end up losing our, our last business.
Yeah.
And I think, and I think then that, that puts a significant debt in the ridership, because this is coffee, it's, you know, it's cakes and all that sort of morning type stuff, orange juice. And they can do more potentially with it, but otherwise, if we don't get them parking, we're gonna lose them. No doubt. Speaking as a far, former retail owner.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for your comment.
Okay, next Maggie Bartlett.
Oh my gosh, I have forgotten what I wanted to ask. Oh, the lighting. So are there county codes that require lighting on a public area? When it's not in use? Like schools, they still light up their parking lots, even though there's no active school event? Are there county regulations for that?
I am not aware of that. I, I don't think, we don't, we don't have any lighting expert, uh, on this call. Um. But we can certainly, um, take that questions and then get back to you.
Okay, because I think that's important. I mean, it's, it's really nice to say, oh, we'll work out the, the certain lights to be down, down, um, aiming down. But there, if they're on all the time, that would not be and that, that would not be acceptable. I mean, just for the people that live around there, to have twenty-four hour lights in their backyard.
Yeah, we can look into that, like Rebecca said, uh, for the parking area. Um, I will say that on pedestrian areas like walkways, we do try to keep them lit.
Keep them what?
Lit.
See, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Lit all the time, when, anyway.
Yeah.
I don't live there, but I know a lot of people would be upset by that.
Sure, we, and we'll take that into consideration.
Excellent, thank you.
There, the, the light is to be aimed down at the area they're trying to lighten, not have it spread out everywhere.
Well, that's, I, the people that are living there may not like that.
Correct, and, and we'll look into it, like, again, in more detail in the final.
Even, even if it's, you know, uh, sensor lights that come on when you need them.
We'll look into that. It's, it's poss- it's a possibility, or, you know, you know, might not even be required after hours.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, we have another question from Katie Blackman.
Yeah, I thought you said earlier that there were three parking spaces, uh, near the Boyd's General Store. Can you zoom in on the area between the, the, kind of the bus turnaround and the store? So those three parking spaces would be able to be used for people trying to access the Boyd's General Store?
So, I can't, um, say, I can't, um, this, the, making these, uh, three spaces as a designated parking for the store is something we'll have to, um, coordinate with the Division of Parking of DOT. Um, so we don't have a certain, we don't have a, um, I can guarantee that these parkings will be designated for the store.
Got it, but potentially.
Yeah, I think, th- this is Gary Aaronridge, and my understanding is, is that we really probably could not sign, uh, sign those spaces to say it's exclusive for the store, since this is a public facility. What we can say is it's short-term parking.
Hmm.
Like one hour parking, half an hour parking, whatever, so that you can get the turnover that you want without saying it's reserved for a particular property.
Rebecca. I would definitely support that. Just, we, we just want to make sure that they, it's such a great resource for the community and for transit riders, that, uh, anything we can do, um, in that way, I would be in support of.
Just to note, in the seventy percent plans, we did note these were short-term fifteen-minute parking spaces, those three.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions this evening? Or perhaps we should go to the, the chat and see if there's any new questions in there.
That would be great. I would say, though, this has been, um, very enlightening, the question and answer session, and I appreciate everybody uh, coming out and raising questions. I think it's insightful to the engineers and, and others to hear your comments, and as, uh, been already stated by others on the team, many of those will be investigated further. Um, seeing that all the questions have been answered, we will conclude this hearing. We'll keep the record open for four weeks. Comments and written testimony will, will then be due on Tuesday, September thirteenth at five P M. Can you put the slide on, uh, Lori, with, uh, Rebecca's information?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, submissions should be sent to Rebecca Park, professional engineer at rebecca.park@montgomerycountymd.gov or via online comment form, and a link to which is provided on the project website. And it's stated what the project website is. Um, and I want to thank you, uh, for participating. And, uh, this public hearing is now concluded, so have a pleasant evening, and, uh, thank you for your participation.